Can I have your attention? Again, I apologize for not starting on time. We had to get set up after our presentation. And you'll be hearing more about that presentation, an abbreviated version of that presentation in a few minutes. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'll start off by saying that Commissioner McClung is not going to be with us this evening. He has developed some health issues and went to Charleston on Sunday. And went through a procedure today. And as far as I know, he's come along okay, but he's having some problems with blood clots again. And so we want to keep him in our prayers. But he will not be with us this evening. We look forward for hopefully being back at our meeting on the 27th. So Kelly, keep Commissioner McClung in your prayer. And please offer that prayer. Robert, how about you leading us in the pledge allegiance to follow?
If you'll join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you give us, Lord. And we just thank you for our community. And we thank you for the heart of our community, Lord. I thank you for the commissioners that are here. And Lord, I just ask that you will be with Commissioner McClung this evening as he continues to heal and get well. Lord, I ask that you will bring him back to our commission and to the county safely so that we can continue on with the county business. Lord, I ask that you will take us home safe this evening and let us be mindful with your actions, our actions tonight, with everything we do. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would move that we approve the minutes of the regular county commission meeting of Tuesday, January 23rd, as presented.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We also have, motion carries. We also have the minutes of the January 11th meeting, which was a special meeting to do a hire for the circuit clerk's office. And those minutes appear to be correct, so I would move that we approve those minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Settlements of states. Kelly for Joni.
On behalf of Joni here, the fiduciary supervisor, I have 10 names to present. Linda Abbott Aylers, Jillian Ray Arboll, Burdette Daly Claussen, Ruby Jean Cook, June D. Darlington, Corby Jackson Morgan, Frances Louise Morgan, Roger Dale Ramsey Senior, Armadaire Trot, and William Franklin Walkup. And those are all in order.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the final settlements of state as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Exonerations, county splits, consolidations, as presented by our assessor. I move we approve them as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Budget revisions. No, excuse me.
Arts and Recs.
Arts and Recs.
We have the following two arts and rec requests. One is the Arts and Rec Committee for $3,270, and that's for the Sports Flex Master Plan adjustments, the clearing limits staking. And that was one that was already approved on a contract. The other one is Arts and Rec Director, the $75 for the cell phone. So it's a total of $3,345.
Okay, I would move that we transfer $3,345 from savings to checking in order to pay these two bills. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Budget revisions.
I have two. They are budget revision requests to increase. That's 401-223. That's the county commission professional services by $2,385. That one is for reimbursement for Supreme Court for reimbursement on home confinement services. And then the other one is the same for 401-223, and it's for $500, $550. And that is also Supreme Court adult drug court reimbursement for home confinement services.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the budget revisions as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Line, audio transfers.
There are none.
Pay the bills. Quite a stack. Have reviewed them. And I would move that we pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Presentations. Mr. Haggy, are you going to do the introduction?
Yes, sure will. I'd like to introduce Robbie Taylor, who is president of the West Virginia Hardwood Alliance Zone, also Director of Economic Development for Preston County, also president of the West Virginia Economic Development Council. Yeah, I don't know what she does with her spare time. She's here tonight to make a presentation and see get hers from the county in a possible membership into the Hardwood Alliance Zone. And she has a presentation to make to the commission. And we'll take any questions as allowed from the commission. Okay, thank you.
Floor's yours.
Thank you. Am I good to come back?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Door back across there. There we go. Like Andrew said, I am president of the West Virginia Hardwood Alliance Zone. And I do have a presentation for you tonight. And I'll go through this quickly so I don't take up too much of your time. My picture is wrong because Pocahontas County joined on Friday. But those are the counties that are in the West Virginia Hardwood Alliance Zone. Right now, there are 10, including Pocahontas. Who we are, each county is represented by a person. And for all the counties at this point, it is their economic development director. We also have members who are from the West Virginia Development Office, including Jim Mosby, Matt Borer, Joy Lewis from the Division of Forestry. Greg Hook is the Assistant Deputy Director of the Division of Forestry. And we have members from First Energy and Farm Credit. The Development Office people give us access to funding and programs at the state level. Matt Borer was with the Division of Forestry, so we do have access to the West Virginia Division of Forestry to help with any issues that come up related to the wood industry. We're looking at possible expansion. And I didn't redo my slide. Pocahontas County is in. Greenbrier County and Fayette County are also looking. We can add counties every three to five years. And that is where we are right now. Our mission is to retain, recruit, and expand the wood processing industry in West Virginia through a collaborative effort. We are the only organization in West Virginia whose main purpose is to promote the development and growth of the wood industry. We were founded in 2001 as the hard industry resource zone, or H.I.R.S. But because West Virginia already has P.A.S. and C.A.S., everybody thought H.A.S. would be better. So we are now H.A.S. The founding members are Barbara Lewis Preston, Randolph Tucker Upsher, Webster, joined in 2004, and Granton Hardy, joined in 2013. Recently, we've been to several trade shows. We tried to go to the National Hardwood Lumber Association Show and the International Woodworking Fair. We go to the International Woodworking Fair every other year because it's in Atlanta, which is closer than California, which is where it is every other year. So we just go when it's in Atlanta. We've hosted webinars for North American and Chinese companies. We've also been to China, Germany, and I think Scotland in the last few years for trade shows. We have translated sections of our website into Chinese because Chinese is a big market for wood products, including West Virginia wood products. And we have added Chinese subtitles to our video. And I'm going to leave it up to the commissioners if we have time to do the video.
Oh, it was a very good video. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
But you know, with all the oaks and white oaks, it gives us all kinds of wood available to us.
In Buchanan, West Virginia, we manufacture engineered lumber deposits using the yellow poplar species. We reach out about 120 square miles from the plant site. And what we find is we're right in the center of a heavy patch of yellow poplar.
Companies you would recognize in the Hardwood Alliance Zone, Armstrong World Industries, a premier wood flooring manufacturer, Greenfield Cabinetry, Allegheny Wood Products, Weyerhauser, many others. You can have the greatest product in the world, provide the greatest service in the world, but if you can't get it to market, it's absolutely useless. So we have all of that right here in the Hardwood Alliance Zone. We have railroads, we have four-lane highways. We have the ability to get our premier product to market.
Interstate 79 allows us to jump quickly to the north or quickly to the south to deliver our product at lower transportation costs.
The hardwood industry has been a part of West Virginia since its infancy. The hardwood industry has provided jobs for third and fourth generation families.
There's actually 200 years of heritage within the forest industry. There is a reason why we have a forest festival in Elkins each year.
Woodworkers are very proud individuals. They come from a long history of working with hardwoods.
I do craft work. Cutting boards, rolling pins. I turn bulls.
Whether you're cutting trees in the forest or you're processing them in a mill or you're trucking them to market, the workforce is the key behind the wood products industry.
We are finding that technical schools are engaged with us, finding out what our needs are in our work and through education to develop those needs.
The state of West Virginia and local governments are very supportive of the hardwoods industry. They've been there to answer the call when markets have been down. They've been there to help when markets are good.
We work closely with development authority. And a lot of our work's been around workers' comp in the state and taking care of the loggers. So they're such a critical component of our ability to operate here in West Virginia.
The hardwood industry has provided jobs for third and fourth generation families. They are harvesting a resource that is renewable two or three times in a lifetime. So it's a product that can continue throughout time.
We're only consuming 40% of the growth rate of yellow poplar at this point in time, which is amazing. There's more yellow poplar today than there was in 1994 on the Sardines Plain.
You can continue working with this material to the end of time. With proper management, you have skill sets and jobs that will be here and be needed throughout time.
As you may have seen the video, we do have Chinese subtitles on it so that it can be read if we have Chinese companies looking at it. So recently, we've created a H.A.S. business directory that lists all the wood product vendors in the Hardwood Alliance Zone, loggers, dry kiln sawmills, producers, trucking companies, banks, accountants, attorneys. If it's something that's truckers, if it's associated with the industry, it's in the directory. And the directory is available on our website. And we've also done a survey of the producers in the Hardwood Alliance Zone to see what we can do to help them. Recently, we started an e-news letter for both producers and for companies and site selectors. We've worked with public radio to do a series on the hardwood industry in West Virginia. We have been focusing on our social media page, including Facebook. So if you go to Facebook and look up West Virginia Hardwood Alliance Zone, we are there. Some of our success stories include quite a few expansions and new companies. Armstrong, 50 new jobs, $16 million investment in Beverly. AFP Logs in Upsher County, Greenfield Cabinetry in Randolph County, 45 jobs and $3.6 million. Two custom furniture businesses in Lewis. Gas line extension for Allegheny Wood Products in Preston County that allowed them to hire 25 more people. And the Hardwood Alliance Zone did help them get a grant for that project. Mountain Craft White Plank in Preston County, million dollar investment, Hardwood Flooring Company. And we were able to work with them on some bank financing. And they got a really nice deal on the property that they bought. Barber County is recruiting an Amish community, and they have had some Amish people move in who are working on furniture and other hardwood items. Hamer Pellet Fuel in Randolph is expanding and upgrading. West Virginia Split Rail is expanding at the Upsher County Development Authority. And just some general information about the industry in West Virginia. It employs over 30,000 people, contributes $3.2 billion to the West Virginia economy. It is in all 55 counties, but the Hardwood Alliance Zone contains a concentration of wood products companies. $75 billion bore feet of lumber inventory in West Virginia. And annual timber growth, and this one's important. Annual timber growth is three times the amount harvested. So we're growing way more lumber than what we're harvesting. This one's hard to see. The top blue line is where the wood products industry was from 2004 to 2014, which is negative. And the top yellow line is the projection through 2020, which means the wood industry is now on an uptick. And on the pie, the red piece of pie is the wood products industry in West Virginia. So you can see that that is one of the biggest pieces of pie. And you don't need that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will put this on our agenda for the next meeting. That way our citizens will have an opportunity to voice their opinions about whether the county should join or the benefits that they could possibly see from this. If Harry Vance hadn't retired, we probably would have had a bigger cut on that timber. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Baylor has traveled from Preston County. Four hours it took her to get here. And I've made that trip. I know it's not an easy drive, especially if you book 219.
That's the way I came.
All right, but thank you for that presentation. Next on our agenda is the Animal Shelter Annual Report. Jen Runyon, still president of the Humane Society.
Yes.
We'll see Mike gets it.
Mostly if they get theirs.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our 2017 Greenbrier Humane Society Annual Report. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the members of the Shelter Advisory Board, to thank all the volunteers at the Greenbrier Humane Society, including its Volunteer Board of Directors. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the community as well. So 2017, we had 518 dogs surrendered and 1,218 cats surrendered to the facility in 2017. Still a big number. In addition to these, 1,736 animals, we provided care for 167 dogs brought in by the ACO. The number's slightly lower than normal, but we didn't have an ACO for the full part of the year. So in total, we cared for 1,903 animals in 2017. 810 animals found forever homes, 634 were sent to rescue. 69 dogs surrendered were returned to owner, as well as seven cats returned to owner. And average length of stay continues to be 30 days or less. So where does that bring us, 2009 to present? 17,671 dogs and cats were surrendered from 2009 to 2017. As you know, the goal of GHS is to save as many dogs and cats as possible through adoption and rescue programs. 7,224 dogs and cats were adopted from 2009 to 2017. Very happy that we achieved a four-year anniversary on February 20th for not euthanizing a dog for space. Or we will. We're very close behind that on cats. Ever since we got through the Khalisi outbreak, we've been good on cats and have not euthanized for space on cats. In addition to local adopters, I do want to point out that we work with several rescue partners out of state whose mission is to help reduce animal overpopulation in more rural areas. We still euthanize. 417 cats and dogs were euthanized in 2017 due to aggression and illness. I want to take a moment to remark on the GHS-owned animal spay and neuter program. The goal of Greenbrier Humane Society is to spay and neuter as many cats and dogs as possible to reduce the number of unwanted cats and dogs, thus reducing the number of animals surrendered by residents of Greenbrier County. 13,236 dogs and cats spayed or neutered from 2009 to 2017. 1,450 for the year of 2017 at a reduced or zero cost to the animal owner, courtesy of the Greenbrier Humane Society. As a reminder, all of the dogs and cats that we adopt out are spayed or neutered. So that's 7,224 adopted dogs and cats from 2009 to 2017 that were spayed or neutered. Thus, in total, Greenbrier Humane Society is responsible for 21,094 dogs and cats spayed or neutered since 2009. And as a reminder, no county money is used to spay or neuter dogs and cats. And we still had almost 2,000 animals surrendered by citizens of Greenbrier County last year alone. There are two initiatives that I want to continue to highlight. One is microchipping. GHS hosted several free donation-based pet microchipping events in the community. Microchipping has proven to be the number-one method of quickly reuniting a lost animal with its owner. This ultimately results in fewer calls to animal control, as well as a reduced stay at GHS. These events were extremely successful. We plan to continue to do these in 2018. Also want to mention, we're continuing to post the ACO dogs to our Facebook page. I mentioned that in my presentation last year. So we started posting ACO intakes on our social media in January 2017. We have over 12,000 followers on our Facebook page. We continue to help reunite ACO intakes with their owners. This lessens the time that the animal is in our facility. We still work closely and hand-in-hand with the ACO following all the procedures that need to be before that animal is released. I'd like to conclude with some information about the newly-formed West Virginia Pets and Disaster Task Force. After the 2016 West Virginia floods, FEMA and the West Virginia Department of Agriculture determined there was a need for a group to facilitate communication and care of animals in emergencies or natural disasters. They contacted animal welfare organizations throughout West Virginia. These organizations are partnering to create a task force. I'm very proud to announce that the Greenbrier Humane Society Managing Director, Maria Doss, was asked to take the responsibility of state director for the West Virginia Pets and Disaster Task Force. The mission of the task force is to identify and facilitate the exchange of information regarding resources, professionals, volunteers, equipment, supplies, available to support sheltering of companion animals, related animals, and livestock during emergencies. The task force has begun reaching out to all West Virginia County EMS. Volunteers are being identified to be regional coordinators. Disaster training opportunities are being identified. And if you all have any questions about the task force or any of the information that was presented, please let me know.
Jen, thank you very much for your presentation. And I, for one, see the value of the spay-neuter program, even though the number might have been up this past year. It's not what it was back when I was 15, when we were kids. The dogs run wild in Greenbrier County in packs. And being a farmer, I realized that very financially. And the spay-neuter program, I know, has had a great impact in this county. And I applaud your all's continued efforts in that respect. Public comment for agenda items. You have one per course.
On agenda items, there are none.
Shucks. I bet you signed up on the wrong one.
Oh, wouldn't you want to kiss?
Let's go ahead and make it.
Come on, I'm sorry. Took the wrong one back here. How do you pronounce your last name? Driscoll. Mr. Driscoll. You want to comment on the HAZ?
Sure, my name is Patrick Driscoll. I'm a co-owner of Architectural Wood in Rosford, West Virginia. And regarding the proposed H.A.S. program with the Hardwood Alliance Zone, as a manufacturer of wood product, I don't necessarily see for my business the need to have the scale of advertising and such that goes along with the H.A.S. That would benefit a lot of other companies that are in the Greenbrier Valley and maybe smaller wood shops and such that manufacture types of products. I can definitely see the advertising and the amount of work that you put into that as far as domestically and internationally for those type of businesses that produce the hardwood lumber. We have somebody who's going to be starting business in White Soft River Springs with white oak, I guess whiskey barrels or bourbon barrels. And to those, I feel like that's a great opportunity to promote their business and to promote West Virginia at the same time. I know that Jim Mosby with the West Virginia Economic Development has always been a proponent for making... for making as much effort as he can on his end to promote our business and others like us that are in the wood product business here in Greenbrier County, West Virginia. So that's, that's a great thing. When he goes to large trade shows, he'll take some information on us and make sure it's passed around, which is good. So where I see benefit with the HAS program for my business in particular is, is within the development of a supply chain, where my company does use hardwood lumber, we also use veneers. If we can expand the supply chain from the Elkins area southward to Greenbrier County and maybe one day to Monroe County, but have that connection, right now we'll just call it 219 connection, if we could have that connection streamlined, that the supply chain is now more readily available at a better price point. Currently, I purchase hardwood lumber on the back haul from Washington DC many times out of Marshall, Virginia, and they're getting their lumber from Elkins Beverly area, so it's actually being exported to Virginia to come back down here to Greenbrier County, which is just down the road where the, you know, the harvest point was. One thing, so what I would say is that I recommend the HAS program for the Greenbrier Valley or for Greenbrier County. I can see that it would benefit not just my company in the supply chain development, but other companies in the supply chain, as well as in the advertisement side and the, the connectability side, where businesses can now connect with others that are suppliers or on the other end of the, of the chain and know who they are and have contact points and have a, you know, have a very good point of contact. And you just mentioned a couple of names up there that if, if we didn't know where to go to, they would know who to put us in contact with. So those things for the, you know, we never asked price, but I think the price was, it was, said that it was $3,000 for the first two years, and this is from the county level, not as an individual employer level, just from the county level, $3,000 for each of the first two years and then $500 a year thereafter. Is that correct? All right. So to me, that's a small investment, and I think that, I think it would probably benefit the Greenbrier Valley quite well in the end. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Next, first, first item of business, the new business, Declaration and Signing of a Proclamation by the National, for the National FFA Week. We have representatives here from Greenbrier East FFA. Mr. Jeff Lee, advisor. Jeff, do you want to come up to the mic and introduce who you've got with you and, and if each of them is going to speak or how?
Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Jeff Lee, advisor, Greenbrier East High School. I've brought with me Kaia Hill, Grace Sealy, and Tiersa Helvey to talk with you about Greenbrier East FFA's projects and what their SAEs are and how they affect the community. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Kaia Hill and I'm a sophomore at Greenbrier East, and I take three ad classes throughout the day. I take natural resources, agricultural mechanics, and animal science. And I also have two SAEs. I have a rabbit SAE, which I use for breeding and for finding companion animals for veterans who need animals. And I also have a job shadowing at Alderson Veterinary Hospital as another SAE. And that's it. Thank you.
I'm Grace Sealy. I am in three different ad classes. I have plant science, animal production, and floriculture. My SAE's are rabbits for breeding and selling and small engine repair.
My name's Tiersa Helvey. I have three ad classes as well. My first one that I have is animal production, second is livestock production, and then floriculture. My SAE is breeding, raising, and showing market and purebred hogs.
What's your dad's name?
Lee.
Has he ever told you who his ad teacher was?
Yeah.
Well, these folks are here for National FFA Week, and this is something we've done for several years, is make a proclamation.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. Thank you. Previous years I've been able to pronounce it. And I will read this, try to read this, and, "Whereas the FFA and agriculture education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems, and whereas the FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agriculture education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing need in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, and whereas the FFA motto, 'Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve,' gives direction of purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agriculture education. And whereas the FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation, therefore I do hereby designate the week of February 17th through the 24th of 2018 as National FFA Week." And this will be signed as soon as Mr. Rose makes a motion.
I move that we approve the proclamation for our FFA Week.
It's been properly moved. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Now, I'm going to explain something to you. I know that you guys know parliament procedure real well, and it's bothering you all that no one seconds our motion. But in the county commission, in the county commission, they allow us to introduce motions without, without a second. So I know you, FFA people, always cringe when you hear people doing parliament procedure without a second. Why don't you come up and we'll get a picture with you? Still do the scrapbook, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay. The ones you have, get in the picture.
They can take the picture.
Go over, you're behind us. One of you in the middle and one on each side. There you go.
I'm going to try to slide this back right here.
Got a big trip tomorrow, understand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Tell your dad. I said, "Look." Seems to me like I had a Sealy in one time. Is that a relative? No one said anything.
K.I.A.H.
Okay. Maybe not. Thank you for coming. Have a good time on your trip.
No, I'm pretty simple. Simple name for a simple person. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, consider signing the resolution for Greenbrier County HMGP Generator Projects for Emergency Shelters in the Clintonville Volunteer Fire Department, the Rainell Volunteer Fire Department, and the Rupert Community Center. Mr. Al.
Commissioners, we've been working on this project for a little over two years now, and we've submitted it to the state for consideration, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, to get generators and some of the facilities to expand our capabilities of warming shelters or places to be able to feed or sheltering overnight if it has to during disasters. So it is, was brought to our attention recently that it's on the move now, and it's going through the process, but they have had a new requirement, which is we need a resolution signed by the county commission. Do you want me to read this resolution, sir?
How long is it? Go ahead, go ahead.
Whereas the Greenbrier County Commission wishes to submit an application of the State of West Virginia Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to request the funding for the Rupert Community Center Emergency Shelter Generator Grant. And whereas the Greenbrier County Commission must assure that the State of West Virginia Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program regulations relate to administration, civil rights, and other applicable state and federal laws be followed. Whereas the county commission must designate an official representative to act on behalf of, in connection with the application, execute all necessary program documents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that, one, Greenbrier County Commission authorized the submission of the application with the State of West Virginia Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Rupert Community Center Emergency Shelter Generator Project. Two, the Greenbrier County Commission will comply with all laws and regulations pertaining to this program. Three, Al Whitaker, Greenbrier County Homeland Security Emergency Management Director, is designated as the authorized official to act in connection with the application. And then on the bottom, it says aye, and then you would insert your name and position, certify that above is a true copy of the resolutions adopted on this date, 2018, at the meeting of the Greenbrier County Commission. I further certify that our quorum was present, and the majority of its members voted affirmingly for this resolution and is signed. And the only difference is that in the other two, it just mentions Rainell and Clintonville in there versus it being Rupert.
Okay. All right. I would move that we authorize the president to sign this resolution. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Commissioner Hanna, if I may, just add on a little bit what the two ladies from the Humane Society was talking about, the Pet Disaster Task Force in the state. Myself and Paula are on that committee. We said on it, within the last week, week and a half, we've received the first of the equipment to help during emergency sheltering for animals. We got that in right when all of the VIPs were coming in, so we're actually going to get it out of the trailer and look at it, but the remainder of it is supposed to be coming around the first of March timeframe. So we will have a whole lot more extended capabilities of dealing with pets and disasters comparably based off what we did in 2016.
I, I attended the advisory board meeting, and she shared with me that you all were working together, and I should have brought that up when she was here, but I appreciate your all's cooperative effort in that, in that endeavor. Just leave me signed. This is blue. Oh, okay. It's blue what you want.
I don't like black. There's some reason.
Consider, number three, consider signing draw request and documents for the Sand Black Water Line Extension Project. And Amanda Mar from Region Four is here. Amanda?
So we have, there's a few documents that'll need to be signed in relation to the Greenbrier PSD. Number two, Sand Black Church Water Line Extension Project. The first is Resolution Number Four for payment for the Thrasher Group in the amount of $5,850.
She has the originals. I just print them off.
Yes.
She has the originals. Yes, she signed hers. Other than the letter, I can only remember her probably.
Yes, and the, the draw request, which is the last document we'll talk about, that one, it changed slightly, but I'll explain that in just a moment.
Do you want us to handle these individually?
That's up to you, however you want to do it.
Why don't you just go ahead and through them, and we'll do them all together.
Okay.
Think there's no problem.
So the second document is just notice of intent to bid, and so we do plan to advertise for bids by the end of February. So that is the plan for that. And then you'll see a letter on the Greenbrier County Commission letterhead, which is basically just stating that we're requesting the authorization to bid, which is basically just another formal document that needs to be approved. The next letter that you'll see, it's not a letter, it's just a certification of area income eligibility. We did have to redo some of the income surveys just to, to fall in line with the different project area, and so we have to recertify those, and that's all that is, just a recertification You'll also see a change of scope activity, so a change of scope was required due to the loss of 45 homes after the 2016 flood. So the income surveys were redone, as I, as I just stated, and then they have to be recertified, so those documents are going to kind of go together. And the final document is going to be the budget amendment request. So there was a budget revision due to the increased legal fees, and the legal fees increased because of additional PSC work that was required and additional easements and rights of ways and condemnation, so the total, total legal increase was $35,000. That takes care of all of those documents.
Yeah, I'll move that we sign the draw request and documents for the Sand Black Water Line Extension Project.
Any discussion?
One quick note on that, as you said, we're going out right away to bid on the project in probably the end of February and hope to start construction on the water line in the spring, projects funded. Hopefully, I'm guessing, probably by midsummer to fall of 2019, we'll have water out of Sand Black. That's my estimate. The water line will be up to there, and then we'll immediately start going from there on east, if I had my way about it anyway, people in the Clintonville area. People in the Clintonville area, the Henson Road area, different places, are really neat water. They have either very poor wells or very low producing wells, and all the way to Alta and Asbury, we have poor water problems. So right on the heels of this one, I was informed we couldn't have two projects going at one time, basically under, or underfunding. So anyway, as soon as we get this one up and going, we'll start working on the next one coming on this way, so. But anyway, the last hurdle that I knew of that we had was the location of the water tank and the Bivens family, Bivens Hill. That family, the farm, their property has been in their family since way back in 1800s, and they didn't want to sell off any land for a water tower, water tank, but they did give us permission to locate the water tank on their property and have four fees, small fees or whatever, excuse me, and, but the property stays in the Bivens family. However, we have a continual use agreement, which even if the property is ever sold or divided, the water, the permit for the water tank is perpetual. So that was our last hurdle, and everything should start rolling along really quickly and hopefully we'll start breaking ground within a couple of months.
One little addition to that, the water line from Raynell to Charmco, pick that buoy up so that those folks can have water. That's, that's probably the very next after this.
Well, that's, yeah, that's in the works, and that'll be, actually, I almost think of that as part of this project. We've always talked to that, but.
We've always thought it should be.
From, from Sand Black on is, is a, is another connection we want to make. The folks in that area ask repeatedly that we continue the line on this way, so.
All right, motion's been made and discussed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'll take the time to sign this, because I imagine you want to travel too.
She's with Region Four, playing development from Somerville, so she's got a pretty good drive yet tonight, too. She had travel ways to get here.
Let's hold your tabs. Look through it there, Kelly, make sure I signed where I'm supposed to. Do you need these signed for our record?
Well, that one's, still some of those are still ours. This one you don't have to do, because that one I have a letter, but that one you need to sign.
Okay.
There's a whole pile of papers. I was printing them out, thank you goodness. And one more.
This one. I'll have to through.
I'll have to make copies, too. Do you need a list? What, you don't need a copy? So that I have it in my file.
Thank you, Amanda, for making the trip down and the work you're doing on this water project for us.
It's our pleasure.
Consider it our RFP on stump and grubbing at the county-owned lot for the Sports Blacks. Mr. Rose?
Kelly printed this awfully small, and I don't have my glasses on, so maybe I can read it. I don't know. We're putting out a RFP. Mr. Harry Vance is here with us today. He has been doing the timber cutting, harvesting and chipping for West Rock, since we've been clearing that property, approximately 80 acres of that property, and he's come along great. And now that it's cleared and opened up, we can see a lot of the, how the land lays and it's surprisingly flat for West Virginia ground, so we appreciate his efforts and what he's done for us. We are putting out the next part of the contract. Mr. Vance hadn't finished yet. This will not be started until he's, he's completed his part of it, so. But this, the Greenbrier County Commission will be accepting bids for clearing and grubbing of stumps and brush on approximately 80 acres known as a sports park, including walking trails that are currently being timbered. The commission will hold a mandatory job showing, we'll decide on date for that. Bid proposals will be accepted for the following two options. First option is clearing grubbing and piling of stumps and brush in one area designated by the county commission. Second option is clearing grubbing and pit burning of materials in areas designated by the county commission. And the contractor shall be responsible for all erosion control and other requirements in accordance with the NPDES permit. Drawings and specs available from Teradon Corporation. The contact person for that is Kristin McClung for sets of the drawings. And it will set a time for the bids to be due, and the county commission reserves the right to accept and reject any and all bids. Work will commence within 15 days after a notice to proceed and completed within 90 days from that date. So we need to fill in the blanks either now or later, but we put this out for advertisement.
You good with getting the dates now so that these ladies and gentlemen can put it in there?
Sure, we can have a mandatory showing whenever you would like. Let's pick a date. Day's the 13th. Our next regular meeting is on 27th. We'd probably like to do it before then.
What about this day? Twenty, that'd be fine.
Monday's a holiday, too, so make sure you get on time to get it paper advertised to, and make sure people, and that would be the only thing.
What time of day?
Probably whatever season. I know you got feeding, whatever, you got things to do, but say 10 o'clock, 10:30.
Okay.
Whatever works for your, your schedule.
Let's push it to 11.
That's right.
So the mandatory showing will be two, February 20th at 11:00 a.m. At, down at the park on Hopper.
Hopper.
Hopper Road.
And. What are our legal advertising requirements, how many times, and how long it'll take you to advertise?
Usually you just have to do a platform, we'll add, so it's one, one time.
One time.
But I don't, on this, I don't know if there's a minimum requirement of how many days or 14 days.
It's back to us by the, our meeting in March.
First meeting in March?
We can do the first or second one here.
March 13th, same date.
Same dates, yeah.
That's right.
March 13th is what we want, because our budget, it's really longer meeting.
That gives three weeks, but it should be.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Let's put about 4:30 on March 13th.
You won't have, well, you'll have your meeting on Tuesday, the 13th.
Yeah, let's have it on Monday, it's on the 12th.
The 12th.
Okay.
By 4:30.
And we'll open at the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I would, I would move that we put this RFP, approve this RFP. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Again, anyone interested in bidding on this project needs to be at the site on February 20th at 11:00 a.m., and then bids need to be submitted by 4:00 p.m. March 12th.
And we will issue a notice to proceed after that date when, after we've reviewed the bids, made sure that they, they're all, whoever's either low bid or the bid that we accept is qualified from a qualified contractor and has all the legal paperwork and when Mr. Vance is comfortable with, you know, finished or comfortable with them moving in. We don't want to step on his toes or move in while he's in the logging process.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, next is consider possible wrecker policy changes. Last evening, I attended the 911 Advisory Committee meeting, and we discussed several different policies or changes in the policy. And one that was brought out to our attention that, that I thought needed immediate attention, and Al, do you want to share that with us?
Yeah, based off, and there was quite a bit of support of this, is, there was an issue that was kind of potentially could cause some issues and danger for the emergency responders, i.e. the whole gamut of anybody that goes out to a scene that could be injured on it. So basically, it was my understanding last night, in this, the primary thing that what is presented before you would be on page six, under number nine, and is part of the rotational dispatching. The officer or the officer in charge of the scene may request deviation from the rotation if they deem it to be a life safety issue on scene. That was the primary one that was discussed last night, and that's the one we're going to pull forward. The other highlighted areas was just going ahead and cleaning up. One was under number two, where it says law enforcement request of a wrecker which shall come from location or rotation unless a large wrecker is requested or emergency. That is, because it's already answered somewhere else, it just cleared up with that. And down on the bottom, under number B on the same page, number three, in the beginning, we, we realized that there is a typo error in it. So it says, in order to qualify a wrecker station as a light wrecker carrier, one of the two, two recovery vehicles must be registered, operable or maintained within Greenbrier County, and just keep consistent with, one of these vehicles must be available 24 hours seven days a week. So other than the one where it's highlighted in there, the officer and officer in charge, the other's just trying to clean up some language in it. We are looking at doing a workshop. Tentatively, we're looking, I think, the second Monday in March, which would be the 12th, I believe, and that's right before the next commission meeting, I believe. So we're looking, and the goal is right now to that evening, to have a workshop to continue on working, because there was other recommendations coming up. But this right here, because of the potential safety and everything, some issues that have come up in the past, that's why this is more or less being presented now, other than cleaning up some of that. Instead of the whole thing being brought one time, we didn't want to delay potential chances. We, we want to give every possible chance that they can stay safe out there as possible. So that, that's what was come up in discussion by the advisory board, as Commissioner Hanna said, so that's for, I was putting together and presented to you all tonight for consideration.
Certainly, we don't want to adopt or have in place a policy that's going to put emergency responders at greater risk. And, and this will allow them to contact the closest available wrecker and get it there quicker without going through the rotation. But we intend for the rotation to continue to be used for non-life threatening situations. I would move that we approve these changes as Mr. Whitaker has presented to us. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, Al, for presenting that, and I think we've got some folks here tonight that was there last night. Again, I've always listened to you, and, and I can't always do everything you want me to do, but I listen and, and I appreciate your input, and I'm glad this was brought up last night, and I'm glad that we were able to fix it tonight. Consider Planning Commission's recommendation to reszone partial owned by JOI Properties. Commissioner Rose?
We have a letter from the, let's see.
It's not too far down.
We have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the county commission. They held a public hearing the other day and made a recommendation on the JOI properties rezoning request. This is on Wednesday, February 7th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing with three voting members present. A motion was made to recommend the request of JOI properties to rezone parcel of land located in Lewisburg District Tax Map 18P partial 53, from forest recreation to commercial to the county commission. The motion was properly moved, seconded and voted on. The result of the voting was three votes in favor of sending a recommendation to the county commission for approval, with none opposed. We had the public hearing, we had no one to come before the Planning Commission to object to the rezoning of this property. It is an agricultural type business, agricultural animal medicine business, and it's in an agricultural area, and it's a low impact business as far as traffic, so we'd move that we had to approve that as presented.
Okay, it's been moved. Any further discussion? Explain to me, Commissioner Rose, this is, this is not the normal way to rezone a piece of property. Normally, you go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
No, the, it goes through the Planning Commission as well for this, but the, like I say, we advertised and held the hearing, and we had no objections, nobody wrote anything in response or objection to it, so we didn't have a problem with it. If the commission would rather that we send it to the BZA for a, for their prusal, that's fine with me, I'm a mental to that.
Has this procedure been used? I don't recall it ever being used while I was commissioner. Has this procedure been used when you were commissioner?
Not exactly sure, but.
It was used, Mr. Snack.
Yeah, it was used.
Recently.
How many years ago is that? That hasn't been since I'm so, between mine.
It hasn't, since I've been here, we haven't used it this way. I know that it does also state that it has to be used in the, in the outline that it's been approved for, even though they're getting reclassified as a zoned commercial, I think they still have to meet.
They have to meet.
The requirements that are set forth that they state, and I mean, you can't like sell it over a tractor squad next to. I mean, he can't like sell it over to Tractor Squad next and make it a big thing. He has to, he has to use it in that method.
It was approved for the business that was promoted.
If that business discontinues, it'll revert back?
It's, it's something on that second page about that, behind your, what is on your paper.
It's on yours.
Something in that back section says, and if he doesn't start within so many months, then it automatically reverts back also. After this, they must receive approval by the planning commission for any changes in the plan submitted for consideration either before or after zoning approval. Failure to do so will constitute the return of the property to its original classification as a zoning district under disordnance. All commercial development must begin within twenty-four months of the approval. Failure to do so will result in the subject property reverting back to its original zoning classification under disordnance. So, he has to stick with the specific type of business planning for the site, which is a lot of-
And if the business discontinues, it will revert back to its original-
Yeah.
Use. Yes, ma'am.
What is his business?
His business is agricultural, mainly agricultural medicines. He, he doesn't do, he's a veterinarian, but what he, he doesn't really take care of livestock or, or animals. He doesn't have anybody come into his office with small animals, cats, dogs, anything like that. What he deals with and, and his niche is that he is a veterinarian, he can dispense and sell medicines, antibiotics, things like that, and he can sell those in a very, and he does market and, and work in a very large area. So, it's not a veterinarian hospital where you have cats, dogs and people coming in, traffic all the time. They'll have deliveries of medical supplies and, and some ag products that he handles. He's not in the feed business or anything like that. It's just mostly medical supplies that he's, being a veterinarian, can market directly to farms and individuals and things. So, that's his business. It's not a, it's not a veterinarian clinic type business.
And are there specific words about that business?
In his application to us, which is a very thick document, a bunch of papers that he sent us, that it does describe his business and what he's doing and goes into a very long list of all the things that they've done to approvals, everything they've done to get the business going. They've met with PSD one as far as getting hooked onto the sewer system out there so they won't have to put in septic. They've also getting hooked into the city water system and so there will be no septic or wells on the property. And like I say, he's, right now, I think he's got himself, he's got four employees, I think.
Am I correct that the sewer system is not on that side of the road?
He will have to pay for a bore under the road to go to the septic syst, to the, to the PSD one system. The PSD one system is at the subdivision right across the road from that property. So, he just has to pay for a road for it to get across to it. Now, another caveat that you want to keep in mind too is eventually PSD one is going on out that road, which is the Muddy Creek Mountain Road or however you want to term it, and pick up the other subdivisions on out, the small subdivision out there on the right hand side. So, that's in there planned within the next few years, so it's not that it's a special, anything special's been done for him.
I had Kelly find the part of the zoning ordinance that allowed this to happen and commercial rezoning, for commercial rezoning, the subject property for rezoning must meet one in the following requirements and just has to meet, meet one and the one that it meets is it's a five acres or more in size. This, this piece of land is seven, seven acres plus. So, so we're allowed to do it and, and the planning commission has recommended that we approve it.
If it wasn't a farm-related business or an agriculture-related business or something that tied in with the area, if it wasn't owned property that, as far as I know, may have already belonged to that family, I don't know, I know they own a large farm right out the road from that. Probably wouldn't have been approved if it'd been a, as you say, Dollar General wanting to locate there or, you know, another convenience store, that type of thing, since it was an agricultural type business in an agricultural area. I think that's the main reason there wasn't, and it's not a high-traffic business where there's, you're going to have a lot of people in and out. I think that's the reason it was approved.
And I noticed that he has a letter from D O H stating that his access is not going to be a problem and-
Well, the, he's going to have an access road, just a small access road into the office area from Route sixty, but his main access road and all his deliveries of materials comes off the Muddy Creek Mountain Road. The state didn't want an additional traffic access right there on top of that, no.
Yeah, it's a little dangerous right there.
It is very dangerous out there.
Actually, his other access driveway, that'll be right on top of the point, will be safer than the Muddy Creek Mountain Road. But, like I say, that's only for office traffic, for, basically for their own use. The access off of the Muddy Creek Mountain Road would be for all commercial vehicles.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, public comment? Okay, a couple announcements. We have one more E and R hearing scheduled for Friday, this Friday, the sixteenth at six-thirty P.M. If anyone who wants to meet with us regarding their tax assessment, we'd be glad to meet with you on Friday. If Friday does not work, we will set up a time that will work for the individual. But you need to let us know by Friday because if we do not have anyone sign up or request a hearing, we will end the E and R hearings at six-thirty on Friday. Arts and rec grant applications are now being accepted. They will be accepted all through February.
It's till March twenty-
March twenty-third. Lost the paper again. There it is. March twenty-third, four-thirty P.M. Is the last time for arts and rec for this year. So, I want to keep that out in the public so that everyone that intends to apply for an arts and rec grant gets that in on time. And I'll add that Roy Grimes is available to help anyone that has questions about how to fill out a grant and contact him through the county commission office. I know Roy will be glad to help anyone. Anything else to come before the county commission? Motion to adjourn?
Say aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, meeting adjourned.